Let's do it, yeah.
Yeah.
That does. Uh, August thirteenth for the.
Yeah.
Fair horse meeting.
Yep.
Um, and then something that occurred to me was the conventions in October, so I put that on there to stand, we can discuss who's all, yeah, I think we should already know who's going by then, but discuss who's gonna do what at the convention. Uh, uh, down at the bottom, I put some notes just for things that are on the radar that I don't necessarily have a particular time for. The particular time in the schedule for. Um, FFA wanted to make a presentation. Talking about alcohol policies, talking about land use project. Community development director said she'd come talk about land use planning. This OFA area meeting was a long time ago. MOUs with all of these groups, the roof and the strategic plan, those are really, those are our plan that we're be getting to.
What's loco?
That's the lower Columbia.
Oh, that's the planes.
Airplane people.
The plane, yeah.
Okay, that's that one.
Where are we at with the MOUs? What are we, what do we, what are we doing with those?
Uh, so I went to the association meeting and it sounded like there was some good discussion about that report. They had proposed maybe even pay rent if they keep their exclusives. Or you're letting people figuring out how we're gonna fit in.
Yeah.
I mean, he said, we're not really trying to market it and push it out, but if somebody wanted to come and rent it, be great to be able to pay for the maintenance that needs to be done on that building with revenue from that building.
Well, especially if it's just something as simple as a meeting or a something.
Yeah, I'd like to get those wrapped up. So I, I know we got a lot going on, especially moving forward towards fair here, but would be nice to get those wrapped up and done as soon as.
I have one hundred percent. I did still, Xander, I'd really love to get these done. And I think the OSB one, it could be easy. I just need to focus three hours on it. And with no other distractions and push through it, um. The yeah, yeah, we'll just get them done one by one. I'd love to get the four H ones done and then FFA would like to have something for their program. And it's good to have these uh, agreements in writing so that everybody has a clear understanding of
Yeah.
whatever comes happening. Um, fourth of July, we talked about parade, you know, this kind of goes along with that meeting, but um, if we want to be in the parade, we need to make sure that we have people to be in it. Some of the other things I thought about were um, if we wanted to decorate the decorated it up any, um, what we're gonna use to actually haul it and who's gonna drive it? If we wanted to invite any guests to also be on it with us, I don't know. Like you said, cool. Um, and another thing we need to do with the people mover is the, the canopy. It needs to be repaired, so we need to either get a new tarp for it or put a different roof on it. Seen where some folks have taken like a carport with like a the tarp on it and they've converted it, but like tin on it. I think that could be something to be interesting to.
What's your take on that, Tom?
Um. The tin would be very, it would, it would be very effective, but also it's very unforgiving.
Yeah.
You know, it's if, if some post-it in it, it evident it.
Yeah.
The canvases. You know, it's it's, it's twenty years old.
Yeah.
Twenty-five years old. It lasted, it lasted well.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, but, uh.
Did you sew it?
What's that?
Did you?
I, I haven't, no, I did not sew that. It was, it was, it was made by, uh, someone that did, uh, like both canvas.
Yeah. Yeah, that, that would be the other option is to try to get another cover. I went and took some measurements and tried to find something, you know, on the internet and it's a weird size, so I couldn't find anything that was easy for it.
I haven't seen what the status of the, I mean, of the old one, I, I was saying it got ripped or whatever.
So it goes, you know, up and over, but then on the two, on the front and the back, it dropped out.
Yeah.
Those two pieces on the front and back have ripped off in the one.
Okay.
Um, and so we could maybe re-grommet it and make it work for a little bit longer, but we need to be coming up with a plan.
I haven't looked at it.
To get it to.
But the thing is, the reason I'm here tonight is because we're gonna use it and we're gonna do something with it.
Yeah.
Time is of the essence, because if we have to have a new one made, it would be the worst case scenario, you know, I mean, that it's not like, like you said, you can't just find one
Right.
and order it on, from uh, Amazon, so.
I think that, uh, the steer and everything seems to be working as it's supposed to be now. We've moved it a couple of times and we tested it when we were working on the the turnaround area, um, to see how tight of a turn we could get. Uh, it's just that canopy.
Right.
It could use a coat of paint.
Yeah.
But that's painting, it's not necessarily any mechanical problems with it.
Um. The uh, we do have an outfit, they're in Portland, that they do, uh, reupholster stuff for us. And, uh, um, yeah, we have like a truck that was at that recovery and the customer wanted it. I don't know why, but anyway, we took the seats out and set it up and it actually did the seats and drivers, driver and passengers eating leather, it was four hundred bucks.
Oh, that's great.
They did a great job.
That's not bad.
No, I don't know if they do something of that size, that would be the only.
Well, we have the benefit of having the one that's there, even though those pieces are out, we have them, so it's a template.
Yeah.
But I mean, if, if it just tore along the seam, we could, we, we possibly could re-grommet something or it, you know, I don't know how rotten it is or.
It's pretty brittle.
Pretty brittle, yeah.
It's getting I don't know how much it sat outside in years prior. We try to keep it inside as much as possible.
We, I've tried to keep it inside and the, your predecessor, it sat outside for a couple of years.
Maybe Tom and Kyle could get together. I mean, nobody knows more about the people mover than Tom.
Right.
So.
You could easily get together on that sometime, you just. I mean, if you want to do it as soon as it's Friday, it'd be great.
Okay, yeah, if you want to come by, I'm here.
Okay. How much your, what is your hours out here?
It depends, but I'm usually here.
His salary.
Four thirty.
Okay. Uh, what time do you get here in the morning?
Around eight.
Yeah. Okay. I could come right up for, I go, I go to breakfast with a bunch of older guys.
Yeah. You, you know, I, I'd be more than happy to come and work at five AM every day, but then I'd be wanting to leave and then all these people will be wanting business then from us.
Yes.
So back with the fourth of July parade, who wants to be, I don't know until I know if I have a crew or not. I don't know if I'm gonna be open or not. If I have a crew.
I think we're moving Jameson home that weekend, so I can't commit until closer to.
Same with me.
Whether or not he's selling everything he owns or just coming home.
Yeah.
Okay, so maybe by the next meeting that we have in June, we try to know one way or the other. I don't know, is that too close or?
No, I think that's.
That's not too.
I didn't register us, but if we don't have anybody to be on it, then.
I think maybe, I mean, you said guests or have, maybe our fam, like, you know, you have young kids.
Yeah.
Maybe they're on, you know. Maybe there's a thrown out handy.
Four H kids that want to.
Or four H kids, somebody that's.
It'd be cool to invite, to, to do that and invite the four H kids, just have Xander just let everybody know.
Martin Parade.
Yeah.
Usually Fur and Feathers does something with that parade, they do that parade.
We're talking about taking people mover to the parade.
Yeah.
That can be towed behind a rig down the road, right?
Oh, yeah, we've towed it out to my shop before.
Yeah.
Well, and they used the blue tractor last time.
Yeah.
We just towed it with a backup with a pinel hitch on it. I mean, you don't want to go ninety, but.
Yeah.
Yeah. Put a triangle on it and go.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I have just somewhat volley or whatever, but anyway.
Uh, I think it would be great marketing too for a concert.
Yeah.
And when is that parade?
The fourth.
Right?
You just play it.
It's a Thursday.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Um, why don't you, yeah, be able to come out here about eight thirty on Friday.
Yeah. Yeah.
Well, you're the owner, close if you want. That's a lot easier to say.
Yeah, and that's where the bearings. We can, if the registration's pretty easy, they have kind of their time, I put their application, so it's got kind of the timeline and what's expected. Uh, check in from noon to two fifteen. Uh, what did you say, parade begins at three. Registration begins July second, so we have great.
Yeah.
We have a while to make a decision, but it'd be good to commit.
Yeah. I think it would be great.
Thanks.
Need to get a crew together to do it.
I will be here if we're not, I can go if we're not.
I have.
So you're going to Moscow to be careful that holes.
Oh, yeah.
He was coming to talk about the people mover, so I got talked about, so he.
He's leaving.
It's finally dried out. Um, the horse stalls, so we discussed this a little, we tabled it. Um, I added in, you know, a drawing and hit some map, which I didn't get my, the notes on your guys' copies, but um, essentially it's twenty-six stall fronts, ten-foot stall fronts, eight twelve-foot stall fronts and thirty-eight ten-foot dividers. That's fifty-nine thousand, three hundred and fifty-eight. He does have this line on his bid that says fair discount, and I don't know what that means, so.
Should look into that.
We should look into that, right? Um, and so I've had some discussion with Sandra and Julie, I think they're indifferent, they, they said, it, it with the turkeys in the stalls with the fronts on, it was not ideal. Um, they would be fine, they'd be happy to see us tear them all out and they can set something up, they'd be happy to have us just tear the fronts off. Um, we can go from there or leave it the way that it is and they'll just do what they did last year, so, um. I think it would add to, to it by having it in there, but so we would have to make a decision if we want to do, if we want to move forward with this and do all of them, or if we want to just update the existing um, barn A. Finish that one off. I think it's basically half, I think it's, it's pretty much the same price for finishing the one stall as it is to do the other stall. There's the same amount of pins and it's the same gun.
How many horses again for fair?
Actually, there's gonna be a few more, I think there's gonna be like, it doesn't always.
I talked to Julie yesterday, she said thirteen.
Thirteen, yeah, so we had two, we had a couple of moves and so it's kind of stuff, so yeah, I forgot about another one. So, yeah, those are the most impactful.
Yeah, it is. And really, it's not about like buying them right now, it's this knowing that if we go and tear these out before the fair, we need a plan and we could start carrying them out. You know, pretty soon.
He's never let us down before.
You, Kelly?
No, the people that we order from.
Yeah.
Well, we wouldn't even order until after the first of the fiscal year. We don't need them for the fair. We just need them for next spring when we start having horse shows.
Yeah.
Till February, right? Is that your first horse show's February? So we don't need them till February?
Yeah.
I say full send.
What's that?
I say full send.
So then.
We need to stop talking about it.
Just move forward with Karen up.
Yep.
And then we can, yeah, we'll get the purchase going later. And said, we have money from friends of the fair that need to be spent on them anyways, so.
Yep.
And it's gonna be, get our final totals for this year. Send some more money.
Okay.
It'll be at least two thousand, I think.
Okay, and it seemed like maybe the numbers were a little bit down this year, I don't know, it was weather or.
Yeah. I think it was weather because it was nice.
Yeah. And we discovered that the roof was leaking on that chip barn. We fixed the, the leak, but there was a whole piece of metal that was like, every time the wind blew it lifted up and water was just dumping in on top of it, so they're drying out, but they're still damp. And so we'll have to figure out how we're gonna manage that for the fair if you want to pull them all out ahead of time.
If you pull them all out though, and the wind goes, you're gonna have a mess.
Yeah.
Like, you're not gonna want that. But you gotta also check to make sure they're not moldy, because you don't want any animals
Right.
on that moldy chips, they're not, they can't be.
How long has it been since that's been empty?
It was empty last year, after their last horse show. It was pretty much empty, I think, right? I don't even think it was the last year that it was empty, I think for right now.
I do think we need to have some clarification on who the chips are for.
Yes.
Because they're not for the horse shows.
Yeah.
Yeah, those, those chips are donated by Hampton for the four H.
For the four H.
Or only four H.
And I've seen a lot of people on Facebook mad that they have to buy chips for their luxury horse events. And when we are showing cows, we have to buy our own chips.
Yeah.
And Jameson was twelve.
Yeah.
So.
So that being said, right now, the fact that they're wet, it might be interest to deal, hey, free chips.
There's some clarification, because the chips are for the kids, not the adults.
Yeah, because when we had our, our NSJ C, we only, we bought
We bought.
the people who bought from us.
Yep.
And only brought their own, and that was just a given, and those shows you can bring your own chips or you can buy chips there.
Yeah, and it's just an expense, like, it's just a cost of having it.
Well, this is state, oh, state Oset this week, I mean, it's eight dollars, but you need extra shavings, but, and they, you have to buy them there to show, you cannot bring in your own. It's strictly eight dollars from them.
So that was gonna say was, you know, not as a generator for us, but as a service to the horse shows, maybe we could figure that out, like, bring in a truckload or something for the show so they could be sold.
Like a pallet value indeed.
Or maybe have a four H pub. What, I mean, are all the kids in horse pubs also showing at the Friends of the Fair?
No.
So maybe there's a horse club that wants to sell shavings or something.
All I know is Oset will keep doing the stalls.
Or Oset wants to sell, or something.
Fundraiser. Okay, that's something to look at next year.
Okay.
And we're doing great on time. Um, arena concert, so it's getting close, next Friday.
Mm-hmm.
I'm excited.
Uh, we have put a lot of thought into marketing it and trying to get people to buy tickets, we've sold about a hundred and twenty. We, we're hoping for a thousand people to show up. It seems like it's been really positive with all the feedback, but a lot of people are just last minute buyer shoppers.
Yeah.
Uh, I know those.
That's our community.
Liberty's in like the six hundred range for
Journey?
For their, all their shows, I think that's their seating, um. So we're a third of the way there, so if you say a third of your ticket sales for early, for pre-sale, that's, I think that's a pretty decent number, I will know more as time goes by.
Well, I think a lot of people too, it depends on the weather. I mean, if it's sunny and hot, some people are like, oh, I'd rather go work in the yard or do something, or if it's cruddy out, like, let's go do something, it just all depends on what's going on.
So we put a, you know, a lot of thought into that, that part of it. Now it's getting closer, we have to think a little bit about production and staging and who's gonna do what during the show. I don't know if you all are planning on being there to help during the show, I mean, I.
I asked you, yeah.
Um, figuring out what all, what we're all, we're gonna do during it. I don't expect it to be very labor intensive, we'll always have to do some admissions to get everybody in.
Yeah.
Uh, but then once they're in, it's concessions and the alcohol monitor or the alcohol vendor and it should really be it, and then and once it's over, getting them all backed out the door. So just even just being greeters and kind of crowd, crowd watching would be helpful.
Yeah.
We do need to sort out the box office sales. I've talked with the ticketing company, he's at a conference, but he's gonna call me on Thursday, we'll get it sorted out. Their firm will likely do the alcohol monitoring for Oregon Beverage, so if we need a piece of hardware, they can bring it when they come. Um, but ideally, like, people that are wanting to pay with credit card, they'll be paying out there with the QR code, buy your ticket, scan this and buy your ticket, and then we don't have to be dealing with credit cards. Um, and then if somebody wants to pay cash, it's pretty easy.
Yeah.
Give you cash and they'll give you a handstand and let you in. I don't have to do all the paperwork if, if that's the case. Uh, if any of you have thoughts on decorations or you know, just kind of making, setting, helping set the mood for the event. Um, I'm open to suggestions. We intend to get the stage and the bleachers, which I put the with kind of what we're talking about for layout. So we, tomorrow or in Thursday, we'll get the bleachers and the in the stage in place. And we can really stand, start getting the piping grape all, all stationed again and getting a better idea of how it feels and maybe that'll get some juices going on, what we can do to make it look good.
So is the laser part doesn't start until, because I mean, that's something like, is the laser gonna start going before the show even starts, just the lights without the music? I mean, I don't know.
During the.
Just, okay, because that's something to get a move going, if you have, you're walking in, you have laser lights going on, people are gonna be like, whoa, look at this.
That's a good question.
You know, I mean, do they have it, even if, because there's always music playing, usually when you walk into a concert. And is that stuff gonna already be going? Is that gonna help? Set the tone.
During, uh.
Pre, pre-concert, I don't know, pre-show.
You know, the lighting is one of the things that I'm a little concerned about. I, I've discussed it with them a little, they think it'll be fine, just try and leave the lights on or one bank of them on at pre-show and intermission and then shut, just shut the lights off.
Yeah.
We're gonna string tiki torches, or tiki torches, tiki lights. Call D, let's, where are their string lights these?
These guys.
The, along the top of the piping grave and see how that looks.
I think that would look good.
Um. Yeah, if you guys have ideas. We did order cocktail tables, we ordered eighteen of them.
Good.
They're folding. I think we paid sixty bucks a piece, something like that. Um, what I've found is the going rate for renting them is about twelve dollars, so go pay for themselves in a couple of years. Yeah, that's using.
Once a year, five years.
Um. And, you know, maybe that's something, until they're paid for, we can rent them to people that are holding events here.
Yeah.
Do the, I don't know, those are things to think about. Um, we were gonna, and I know it's getting close, um, so we're gonna do it, we need to do it quick. Talking about maybe having some other food options come out and then we will all work with Josh on that also, um. Just don't know what to expect, and I don't want people to show we like, we were thinking of something else and.
Yeah, but when you go to, have you ever been to the one at Liberty? There's not much, but peanuts, candy, popcorn.
Yeah.
And that's like when they've had all their rock bands, there's not a bunch of food food.
But there's restaurants all around them, you know?
Well, that's true, but when you're at a concert, most people don't
Yeah.
eat a bunch of food.
I don't.
Yeah, maybe before and after.
Before and after, but not during it.
Yeah.
Um, yes, open to any ideas you guys have. This is in this, like, is something we've kind of made the statement during it, like, thanks everybody for coming out, we appreciate this, our first go. Bear with us while we, something like that, like.
I also just think we have to keep in mind that if it doesn't work the first time, doesn't mean
We don't do it again.
Yeah.
Like.
And we take feedback from people.
We have to have feedback from people and it has to like gain momentum before people are like, oh, we went to the fairgrounds concert.
Mm-hmm.
It can't just be a one and done.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. We have to see what we would want to do differently. We don't even really know at this point, like, I have this vision of what it's gonna look like, but is that what it's gonna actually look like once we set it all out?
I think it'd be cool to have the laser stuff going if they could before the concert started.
I agree with that. People get on their cell phones and be like, look.
Yeah, they're gonna be Snapchat and then they're gonna be so, you know, doing live, like, with a pistol laser and you might get more people like, oh, that's going on, I'm gonna go.
Right.
You know, so.
We're excited for it, um, we're, we're in this little role here, and it's been crazy busy here for the last month, the last month has been just slammed. This week is kind of got this a little slow, but then it's like, that's next week, like, we've got a lot to do for that. And the weather's nice again, so everything's gonna start growing like crazy.
So I see your note on here about putting chairs down.
Yeah.
I, I personally don't think you should.
I don't either.
I hate chairs.
I hate.
Uh, and, and really what I say, why I say that is because you've got the portable bleachers on both sides for three hundred people each. And then you've got the retractable bleacher in the back for even if it's just four fifty.
Yeah.
You know, so you've got more, you've got a thousand fifty for seating right there.
Yeah.
I.
Maybe we could do a few more rounds back here or something.
I think people will enjoy dancing, because if you go to the Liberty and any of theirs, they're crammed in the little corners, or they're trying to get on stage to dance.
Yeah.
Like, they wanna dance.
Yeah.
If you meant.
Well, and it just terrates the people that are sitting.
Great people watching.
Yeah. Yeah.
So I do no chairs.
I think that.
I wouldn't do tables either.
It's just more work for you guys anyway.
They're gonna get knocked over.
The tables are nice because people can set their.
I mean, in the back.
Yeah.
Especially if they're dancing, they need a spot to set their drink and their jacket and.
Then maybe just.
In the back, you mean, yeah.
Maybe you only have the tall.
Tables and the tall tables.
The tall tables back there.
But I think the. No chairs.
Yeah, no chair, they just can sit their drinks there.
As I, and I only have twelve tables.
Or they just chuck.
Twelve high-top showing here and we bought eighteen, so that could fill in that little bit back there. Yeah, how do you encourage people to get up there and cut loose?
It just takes one person to get out there.
It takes some of that.
Open the bar early.
And they're going.
Yeah.
That's all it takes.
Yes, this is the concept we're going for right now, we'll get it staged and we'll see how it goes, uh. There's a the master gardener sale this weekend. They do need two pieces of the stage, but we'll set up the other section there, we can at least get a feeling for how the stage gets out there this week, and then maybe we'll see something and be like, oh, this is amazing.
Yeah.
We know what we're doing, or.
Uh-oh.
Need to work.
Yeah, hopefully a bunch of people come.
I think they will, I really do. People want stuff to do around here.
Okay, advertising, we've you know, the radio stations are definitely persistent on trying to get us to buy a lot of, um, advertising through them. I've had some conversations with other fairgrounds and you know, just about kind of the changing world, and I think you guys sat in a couple of sessions at the conference also, just talking about the change, um, and the how that works. Uh, I talked with Eric a little about it, he was like, I wouldn't, I wouldn't hit on all of those stations like you've done. Basically, they're trying to sell a package on every channel in town. It's like I hit on the country music channels and I hit it hard for like a week now, and then um, like, three weeks, four weeks before the fair, just be really hitting it hard again. And then use all the other dollars towards like digital marketing or print or all these other services. Um, so right now, we budgeted fifteen grand in this year for, this current year for last fair, we have twenty-three hundred dollars left for that. We budgeted ten grand for non-fair advertising, we've got about nine grand left in that, we really haven't done a lot of non-fair advertisement. We have done some for this concert, but, and we've done some like newspaper, not newspaper, magazine ads and things like that, but so we have a little bit of money to work with for this year. Next year, we've got twenty thousand budgeted for fair. We would want to leave some of that in the tank for next spring, maybe three to five grand, so if we got like eighteen grand, we could use for marketing.
Yeah.
Um, and then ten grand for non-fair for next year. So we've got, you know, fifteen, seventeen grand to really try to sell our fair and our concert. Uh, I've talked with Ohana, that's now doing digital, they also are the radio station. And they're selling, you know, basically the ads, you go to the news, the news channel and there's ads that pop up on the side, and so we're selling impressions. And so we're selling impressions. She provided this PowerPoint and she's very knowledgeable. She can, she said she'd be willing to come and talk to us also. But it's basically either targeted or um, keyword or geosound. So that's the way that they pick who's going to be getting these advertisements.
Yeah.
And it's about a thousand dollars for one hundred thousand impressions. So that's ten dollars per thousand. Does that sound right? That math? I think that sounds about right.
Yeah.
Um, it's comparatively, a radio station commercial is about twelve to fifteen dollars per play. And so how many people are hearing that commercial that one time that it played? You know, is it a thousand people? I don't, I'm not sure if it is. So I think it's definitely the best use of our money. What they're saying is basically buying a package that's for six months. Um, and then we would have, you know, those hundred thousand impressions every month that we could change our ads. And so it wouldn't necessarily just be for the fair. We could advertise anything through it or we could potentially even pass this through to some of our renters, like already was coming to town. We already bought you know, a hundred thousand impressions this month. We're going to now transfer those to you. Like, we're just gonna use our contract. You got ninety thousand or sixty thousand impressions at ten dollars per thousand. You owe us, you know, this much. You just kind of pass it through to help promote those.
Yeah.
That's kind of where I'm thinking that we should go with this and give it a shot. Uh, we'd have to sign up for six months. So it'd be at least a six thousand dollar investment to get going and seeing how it goes. We did about the same with that with the Astorian last year and what it, what we discovered is that was really just on their page. Um, so this will be on every page. This is like connected with Google and all these big advertising companies. Uh, not just, you know, you have to go to the newspaper's page in order to see that advertisement. So I think we definitely wanna go this way. There was a little controversy at first because like this concert, the arena concert, we're in competition with them. They are selling tribute shows from Ohana and they're like, we can't advertise for that. Is that, well, pump the brakes. If we can't advertise with this to the fullest extent, we should probably look for another company that we don't have any restrictions on. And so they said, okay, well, in the digital space, we'll do anything. The radio station, though, we still can't advertise your tribute shows that are in competition with theirs. Again, fair enough. At least they made some, we made some move on there, but yeah. So we'll have to make a decision and get going, but I think we need to hit it. We got, say, eighteen thousand.
And is the social media a separate charge?
That's, the social media is.
This seems expensive.
For the digital marketing?
Yeah.
Well, like I was just saying, the, the radio is twelve dollars a commercial. Right? Every time it plays. So it's, I think it's cheaper than radio. And I think it reaches more people, but yeah, advertising is not cheap as you've found. Um, just to be in the ad for, um, like the Sunday market in the grab vest, it's like five hundred something dollars for our ad just in that. Then into do all of them, it's like three grand, I think, just like that number. I can't remember the numbers. It's expensive, yeah. We did like nine hundred and eight slots by last year and got a month's worth of ads. We did, you say, we did the stuff with the Astorian and I don't think we really got much value out of that. Um, the radio stuff we did last year, we probably spent almost seven grand in radio commercials last year. If you have some other ideas on marketing, you want to receive a bill here.
Yeah, this is not my wheelhouse at all. I mean, it is a lot of money for sure, but.
It is. I mean, I don't listen to radio. I mean, I listen to it there.
How many people listen?
Do you listen to the radio? Do you? Just like the local radio or?
What channel do you listen to?
Christian stations.
Yeah. They own those stations, yeah. Yeah, we have the twenty thousand dollar budget that we've got to spend on advertising on where the other, um, think that this is gonna reach. I mean, it's gonna reach people in class of Toma, Columbia, Pacific.
Well, I guess it's worth a try.
I mean, try it.
Gotta try it. That's, that is one thing about that. At the OHA conference, it was nobody paid for radio. Like they were like, we do not pay for radio anymore. Everything, all their da, dollars are spent on digital advertising. Everything. They don't, if the, if the radios want if they're, if they're wanting us to, to help like do that, then that's fine. Well, you guys can do it if you want to get some listeners on there, but we're not paying for it.
Yeah.
So.
It's some of the, it's some of the conversation I tried to have with the radio channels was like, you know, I'd be more inclined to making a deal with you if I knew that you were gonna be playing the songs for our performers.
Yeah.
Or often they're like, oh, we have no control over the programming. Like that's all comes from corporate and wherever. So we don't get to make those. Well, it's tougher. Like, if I knew that, well, one out of ten times I turn the radio on, then I was.
You're gonna hear a beady beady bamba.
You know, that's what gets those earworms going and then people wanna, uh, the, the bridge said that they can do their own program because they're local and independent.
Yeah.
Those larger entities. This is definitely a new avenue for me as well, like trying to figure out this marketing piece.
What, what do you think, Kristen? With, because you were at that chamber, what did you guys use for? Did you do?
We, a little bit of radio, working with the Astorian, um, but I'm hearing in the, the OFDA conference, I sat in on a session and they showed a graph of where radio is going and where digital marketing is going. And it's just saying that radio is going now. Yeah. Let's we go with it.
Yeah, and we will get a lot, a lot more, more of our value will be out of meta, like what we've been doing with the Hooverback concert. And we're gonna work with those guys as soon as, like, as soon as this concert's over, we'll be shifting into doing the same type of thing. For Joe Nichols. Just right now, I don't think we wanna have Cleveland Mac and Joe Nichols ads.
Yeah, I know.
No.
So.
I do like that you can transfer, like, okay, we're gonna focus on Cleveland Mac, then we're gonna move to Joe Nichols and then, you know.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're basically pre-buying a package.
Now, we're gonna do this in the fall after, you know, the fair, so.
Yeah, and if, like, we can pass some of this through to, like, the Scandinavian festival and try to get more people to come into that, where the monster trucks are coming and we can pass that through and have them help us offset our costs that we paid for.
Yeah.
This package for that month and we really don't have much going on could be could be useful. Hopefully we have stuff going on every quarter.
Yeah.
Uh, it's something I pitched to the um, convention committee also. They're saying, what kind of content do you guys want at dimensions? Can you talk, can you get somebody to talk about digital marketing and like just where the world has gone, our, our industry has gone from radio and newspaper to to that, to where it is now. Between, you know, Pandora and YouTube and Spotify and Meta and, you know, this targeted marketing.
Yeah.
Okay, what's next?
Sponsorships.
Sponsorships. So, um, who we got here?
The one, the list that you have is just from last year. Have any of these been contacted and like, it's sent?
So that was kind of what I was hoping to hear from. I know there was a few that you were gonna do and there was a large amount of them that Mallory was gonna do. Um, when she said she was gonna make it to the meeting, that was the text that sent her and said, can you send me an update on?
There's a few, like, Mackie, I mean, I told you about Morcy, Mackie and Ava. Those, but, um, Rally Time, I can get ahold of them. Um, Lozaria, like, you know, and Bruce's Candy Kitchen, I can get ahold of them.
It, she had indicated like she had talked to most of them, that they were wanting to get a copy of something sent to them or email sent to them. And so just kind of following up on where we're at.
Okay, well, I'll double check with her what she's done and then um, can I get the email of what our sponsorship says? Cause I know I'm gonna get that.
Yeah, I can send it to you again.
Okay. I know it's buried in my emails.
Um, one thing Nygar is spelled with two A's. Please don't send them anything with their names spelled wrong.
Oh, come on.
Um, and you know, these are just the, the last year ones. We do have, we had a new one apply already from the Saltair Realty. Um, they, they turned in a twenty-five hundred dollar sponsorship. So that was our first and only sponsorship so far, but
It's cool.
Um, I know I reached out to Ronnie when he was here. He's been here a couple of times a week for the last month. So
Yeah.
Uh, we sounded like him and we were, um, on board for it.
And you talked to Caleb quite a bit, I mean, and stuff, or no?
Uh, I occasionally, I mean, I've been trying to get him to, we've been trying to talk about Mudrids and getting an event here, but I don't I haven't talked to him recently. Kelly talks to him quite a bit.
Yeah, I'll talk to Mallory.
But she had a list of ones that she said she was gonna do, so like, we can follow up on that. Yeah, and these are just the current ones. Once we know that we touched with all of these people, we can do some public advertising, but I really wanna make sure that we've contacted all of these prior ones before we move forward.
Okay.
New ones. Um.
I'll talk to Mallory.
And then we do have a draft going for non-concert sponsorships that we need to kind of lock that in. There's a lot of things that we could get sponsorship that we should try to get sponsorship to, the Pig Rose, the Rascal Rodeo. Even if some open class, like awards, like if they did, it's not even money. If they could donate to, you know, prizes for like the grand champions on the different classes would be great. Um.
I go back real quick on Rascal Rodeo. I know who is heading that? Like?
So we've got a whole section here for fair.
Okay, we're gonna go to that.
Okay. Yeah. Yeah, this was one of these things, like, like we're getting there and we still have three months, but time's ticking away. And we wanna be, wanna be, I know the Pacific Power's interested in doing something. Leak Ecology is interested in doing something. They're not necessarily reoccurring one. If people that are interested in sponsoring. Okay. Yeah.
We're on to fair plans.
Hey. So, yeah, we start with Rascal Rodeo. Um, First Steps isn't able to financially run it like they did last year. We have received a quote and we're working on the contract that they pour ourselves. Um, it's.
We do have one committed sponsor from Dr. Ramsey. And Brandy said she would still help run it. She just, her nonprofit can't financially support it. Um, they've been really hard to get ahold of. The Rascal Rodeo.
Yeah, I finally got ahold of her and she sent the contract and we're, we're getting through the contracting piece, but if you need to talk to her about like production and stuff.
We need to be clear on how many horses we need. Cause last year that was what they, all the kids wanted to do, but we also didn't realize that some of the kids were going to be adult-sized. You know, people. So we needed bigger horses, cause we had some ponies.
Mm-hmm.
And they have to be able to walk up to the platform.
Well, we had some kids too that didn't have the balance.
Yes.
And you had to hold on because you thought they were gonna fall off. I mean, it was kind of
So we, we also need.
I wasn't strong. I mean, I was holding on to one. I wasn't strong enough. If they came, were coming off, they were coming down on me.
So we need like three people a horse probably, because some of the kids were also afraid by the time you walked away from the platform.
Mm-hmm.
So we need someone to lead the horse and then maybe someone on both sides.
Well, we had that last year, but I think you almost need, I mean, cause some of those kids were, were bigger and then horses were so small.
Yes. So we need some bigger horses, but we need a better idea.
Maybe I can schedule a video call with the two of you and, and her name is Anne Erica. Yeah, I think that's where it is. Anne Erica and then Brandy potentially.
Yeah.
Time to talk about all this stuff and try to get that.
Do we have it on the, is it gonna be on Tuesday again?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, I.
I think that's really the only available time that we're.
Well, I thought, I thought it worked out great. Um, I was also gonna reach out to Mel and, or, um, Heidi Wiseman to see if she had some resource for some help.
Yeah.
Maybe from her classroom. Um, cause you know, a lot of the kids are gonna know that instructional assistants and the teachers.
Yeah.
And maybe they would be more comfortable on the horse if there was someone that they knew already.
Right.
But I'm thinking we probably need at least ten horses.
Well, we need horses that will stand and will walk up to the platform and are fine. Last year, we had a couple that won it.
Yeah.
And we don't need a bunch of minis.
No minis. I would say none.
I'd say no minis because there's no kids that are really can ride the minis.
And they really weren't interested in like seeing the horses. They wanted to do
They wanted to get on.
And then they wanted to get on the horse.
So that was the first thing at the fair last year and the fair started very fast last year. I totally missed that one hundred percent.
We were out there, yeah.
It was really fun. It was, if you get a chance to come.
It was one of the best things.
Like, it was so heartwarming. Those kids were, and their parents were crying.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. It was really cool.
It was a pretty cool event.
The nice thing also about Rascal Rodeo is they provide all the things we need. So they provide prizes and the T-shirts and the bandannas.
They said get horses.
We just need horses.
It'd be great to get some sponsorship. I feel like it's something that people would jump at sponsoring if they knew it was an opportunity.
Yeah, I have a lot of pictures from it, so I can send them over. We can maybe do it.
Yeah. Uh.
One guy was even handing out autographs.
Oh, that one kid was so cute.
We do need, okay.
Yeah, maybe we could reach out to friends of the fair and see, yeah.
Well, I asked some of the I asked some of the open ride people last year and they all said no.
Kami brought her horses. When she went to park the truck, got back, the lady's like, we can't use these horses, but she never got to see what happened with the horses.
They wouldn't walk up to the platform.
Oh, they wouldn't walk up.
They wouldn't walk up to the platform.
Okay. Which we didn't know that they needed to do before that day. Yeah.
Yeah, we didn't really know what was going on until that day and it was kind of, we were just.
It's like three step, like a metal platform with like It's noisy.
No, yeah, and they're up higher and then you have like three of us trying to get one.
And there's a drop off right there. So there was a lot going.
There's a lot going on. So.
How do I share my ice cream? Share. I'm gonna ask Barry if she has, she has a couple of dead roe horses. Barry.
Would Barry come help?
Oh, yeah.
I've never met Barry, but I hear she's amazing.
One of the other things to talk about, so we have the we have the three riders be, so for Cassie, Joe and Selena, who just sent that to you, there's a lot of reading to do. Um, the, of the opener for the, for the tribute show, there, there's really nothing for the writers. Just basically you're on, guys. Get up there. We'll just need to tell them when they need to be for soundtrack, but we won't need to do anything.
Yeah.
They'll just come and they'll play and then they gotta be done and then they go. Uh, one of the things I saw was the dressing room piece and so I asked some clarify, clarifying questions. Um, a message I got from Paige today said, can we get three RVs? And I said, well, I don't know where three RVs would go.
Yeah, right.
Um.
You know, hard to get.
But I also, that said, I would bring it up to you guys tonight.
So.
So what I think I read was basically Cassie wants her own and then Joe wants his own and then he wants one for his band.
So last year we had Mackie came in and that's what Eric used, cause then Eric needs his own.
Yeah.
Because Eric has to have, so then do you want me to ask Mackie when I talk to him if he can, we can use that for Eric's?
Production office.
Yeah.
Yeah. And it'd be Paige's office, I think. I don't know if Eric will.
I think it's gonna be Paige, isn't it?
Yeah, and especially for two nights and he might come out for like Thursday, but.
Okay, so I'll ask Steve about that.
So yeah, that's the question. We paid him five hundred dollars for that, to rent that.
Who?
Steve.
But if we could.
Not Steve, sorry.
Kelly.
Yeah.
You want me to get ahold of Kelly Kitey too?
Yes, please. We will get that one locked in if possible and then say if we everybody that I think we know that would have an RV is going to have it in the.
We can, we could get him two more RVs, but it's not gonna be back in that. It's gonna be out like in the.
There's no room.
So I haven't gotten a response back.
That's what I mean. That's where they would go.
And then are we gonna run into, they're not
Secure.
Secure.
Right. Cause there is something we can send that too. Um, I did ask for Eric to work, cause I did say like and we can look for that, but I, where are they gonna go? That was my first question, but where the heck are these gonna go?
Plus you have their buses.
Right. Well, no, these are all air, so they're not gonna be.
They're not, okay. So we don't have, well.
If there's no, there's no buses.
There's, if there's no.
They're flying, yeah.
Oh, you're gonna go pick them all up?
On Portland.
No, they're, so they, they will get their ride into town and then, uh, and then we'll be responsible for.
For the hotel.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't know how about Cassie, cause she's playing in
Shed, or Water Shed or.
Yeah. So these are all questions that'd be great. Like I read all these. I sent my concerns to, to them, which was really just like the hospitality stuff. Um, the other stuff is all pretty straightforward. Um, but I did say, can you guys send like the cheat sheet? Like, what do we need to do so that we can make sure we have all that digested all out?
Yeah.
Um, It'll be a follow-up call that we should probably have sooner than later, that stuff lined up.
If there's no buses, we could definitely get one extra.
Yeah, if there's no buses, because.
Yeah, imagine that. Well, if, if we're providing all of the backline, then. They don't even really need, yeah, that's a good question to ask. Like if, then this is an airshow. How's that different than what we've done in the past? And we could schedule a concert committee meeting if you guys want. We can kind of hammer out some of these details.
We probably should.
Ground, we will need to get a bus and like the, the enterprise does not have one, does not have one.
Well, um. Encore has a bus, is what Kelly said, and I think we might be able to use that.
Okay.
Lums does not anymore because it's on the lot for sale, so we cannot use Lums.
No, oh.
I don't know if Astoria School District will let us use a bus, but is that, or I mean a van, but is that okay for those artists? I don't know.
Right.
Some are okay with it and some aren't, but then if you're having to bring all those vans, we're gonna need two drivers, two buses. We need to figure out, or two vans, we need to figure out because I don't think you're gonna put Joe and Cassie together. I mean, they're gonna want separate.
Yeah, these are, these are the conversations we need to have sooner than later. Those are probably out of all of the issues that we would need to sort out. Those are kind of the minor points. The other stuff is pretty straightforward like that. We need catering and we need it.
Yeah.
Security and lights and that's easy, but the, the little detail we're dealing with the artist that need to get lined up. Uh, so I have this, I have the big spreadsheet that's got kind of everything, but what I tried to break this down into. And I did add a couple of the no cost things was just to the things that cost money, cuz that's the important part. We gotta spend the money and. The money spent. No, I didn't have. Said, we'll provide influence, you know, there's just too many things and we're still, it's like changing by the minute.
Yeah.
So this is essentially the budget. Uh, five thousand premiums, thousand for judges, twenty-two hundred for entertain, two hundred and twenty thousand for entertainment. Seventy-five for county fair expenses, twenty for advertising. Now, a caveat on this is this two hundred and twenty thousand was a Joe Nichols, not Joe Nichols. Trace Atkins year budget number, and we've been using this the last two years. So that's.
That's a lot.
That gets us to the three twenty. So I've broken it out and the, the color's a little funky there, but, and these are the categories. Fair premiums, that's straightforward, in and out. Open class judges, that's in and out. Really, I think we only paid like six hundred for the judges last year. Um, the budget for. Entertainment. Which I have some, this is really hard to see. Let me change, turn that off. The color. Okay, here. So that says a ten, a fifteen and a fifteen, and those are plugged in, so inflatables is kind of what's left over. The logging show, they have been unresponsive since before our last meeting. I've called her twice a day for weeks and her phone doesn't answer, voicemail's full, I've emailed her, I've gotten no response from her.
So there are no.
So I don't know if like something happened to her, you know, I mean, it's entirely possible she got in a car wreck or something. I don't know, but. I've been holding out that she will call me back and say I have something going on, or at least say, no, it's not it.
Who is it?
It's that Logging Show International, which is the log rolling and.
Yeah.
We've really been holding out. This thrill show, I have three different companies that all wanna come and they're like BMX, blow the globe of death with the motorcycle inside. Um, again, I've been holding out, but at this point, I'm ready to go with them. I've had conversations with two of them in the last four days. Um, the one guy's gonna double check some stuff and call me, call me tomorrow, so I'm intending to get the thrill show booked this week.
I think if the logging show's not, I mean, why not? And I'll tell you what, the kids at the circus with the motorcycle on that round cage. Thought that was the coolest thing ever.
Yeah.
So I think that will be a hit.
In the one guy, so one guy had a number of like in this fifteen grand, another guy had a number of like this nine grand, but they, he has more stuff that he's doing. Um, they've got things like stilt walkers and then like the thing that goes. And they had it on the big, I'm trying to explain it, you know. It's like a ball and then it's got the, the big long off. Counterweight and the guy's like in it and it's like going around a big thing and he's like dancing on top of the thing. I don't know how to explain that. An aerial. They have that and then they have just like, well, basically they're circus type people.
I think that would be cool, I think.
But the one guy also has like a BMX or ramp thing that he can provide. I think the fifteen thousand one is the guy that has the BMX piece too also, which I think. Wouldn't fill in. Um, wherever that goes, we need to make sure we have CD. Okay. Honestly, those, you know, those three things are kind of the big ticket stuff. The rest of the stuff is smaller. I, I mean, Ride Hard is big. This is gonna fill up a lot though. He's doing three mutton busting performances a day and goat roping. I think it's three goat roping.
And the goat roping's for big kids.
It's, yeah, it's for, I think anybody, I think.
Big kids can't do the mutton busting.
Yeah.
So.
And he's, he's the guy that brings the mechanical bull.
And he's bringing the long ones. So there's a lot with that package. Um, but you know, these other three are the thing, and the inflatables, there's seven vendors that all have inflatables that all wanna come here and they all have availability. So really it's just how much budget do we have left that we're gonna spend and we'll pick what we want from there. They're, they're all on the hook. We talked with the, the gal from that iconic events, North PNW Iconic Events is doing the seniors thing. And she had a lot of stuff to provide. She has some other entertainers that she might be able to help coordinate with. I need to jump on a phone call with her and see what's available. She did have a, she has like a group of entertainers that she has a thread or a forum with. Sounded like she had some people that were interested, but then someone else in the, their red was like, oh, that's a small fair and then the people backed out and they're like, oh no, or I'm gonna. So, but at least that's what her message indicated. I haven't talked to her about.
Yeah.
But she's had, she was like, I have petting zoo, that face painters, that have all of these types of performers and stage performers and ground acts. Um, but then she's also got.
It'd be nice to have face painting because that was something also at the circus, you saw people lined up with kids to get their face painted. Kids loved.
How much was it?
Ten dollars.
Cause it would be nice to have like someone that pays us instead of us paying everybody.
Yeah.
Yeah, kids love bounce house. The, I'll kind of scroll down because I've hit on some of those a little further down. The Northwest Central doing the flow, I can't say it, folkloric dance they're gonna do Saturday. And they're, you know, it's a Hispanic group. Uh, water, I put these two in. I was kind of going through my other list just to try to make this show like we have a lot going on. It's more than just what we're paying for, but they're gonna come for free. Watermelon contest, fashion review will free. Petting Zoo, say Red's Ranches is available. Three thousand's what we paid Funny Farms. They're interested. He was like, I'd like to cut my hours back though. Cuz I was here for, it was a lot of hours. I said, well, we. I go, but we did cut our hours bareback, so I sent him the new hours and he's gonna send me an update. Um, and maybe we can help him. Maybe we can use some of those older hog pens and help him make a more. Professional looking petting zoo area. Okay, few minutes for the meeting? Gotcha. Pig roast, one quarter so far and it's at five grand, it was two pigs. Rascal Rodeo, this is the true number, six, four thousand sixty-eight.
Which was, they, initial quote was six.
Okay, uh, yes, the slower.
Seth for four grand, that's for him to do one stage show and two grounds performances every day. What about Booth is twenty-five hundred? So this is the face painting guy. He wants fourteen K.
No.
No. Any wants lodging for fifty-seven.
Negative.
Sent him a message today and said, how about we provide you as base and you charge.
My mom will come do it for free.
I mean, I'll put for that price.
And so then he's like, but I'm also.
See the guy that did the balloons? He's not the same guy.
His wife does the caricatures and then he dresses like Spider-Man.
Oh, the ones that were over here last year.
But that, if we're paying him fourteen, he can get his own hotel.
Right.
That is so expensive.
You know, I'm to the point where I'm with you guys. I would rather have somebody local come out instead of the booth and charge people for. I'd rather let them come for free and charge people.
Yeah.
Than pay him to do this.
It's a total no for me.
That's a no.
So the Hannah gal said she will come out. We're gonna, she's gonna get a booth and she's gonna do the Hannah. Her husband's not gonna be available to do the face painting, but. A face painter and a caricature person that makes up for that, cuz he's really upselling. He's selling a lot more than just face painting and caricature.
Yeah.
Um, we're gonna budget for eight grand for, for bands. Um, that's about what we paid last year. And that's just for the side stage band. Uh, we've got a lot of interest. I just need to book them at this point. Boozing down, here's the. Here's the main concert stuff. Really, this is all the main concert.
All concert.
Oh, yeah, all this is concert really. So one thing that I think is amazing, last year we paid seven grand for the stage. This year is eighty-one hundred for two nights. And that covers their lodging, so he's basically giving us the same price for two nights. But we're paying for his lodging this year.
Yeah.
Who books the hotels for them?
Uh, they're booking their own hotel, but we do have hotels that we have to book for folks. So there's some things, we have numbers plugged in. Um, Screw Stuff has said that they may be able to get the carnival to there, bring some of the little carnival games in. But they asked us to basically buy all of the prizes that they will be giving out.
I'm fine with that.
Oh, so I need to follow up with their. Car show's coming. Um, it didn't sound, it sounded like it was in the air on if the barbecue was gonna come or not. Which could solve a problem for us. General expenses, um, toilets. Side stage lights, you know, we're kind of trying to track this, but when it comes down to you right there, and this has his, let me, let me delete this guy. I mean, basically with what we have plugged in right there already, we're at three hundred and ten thousand.
They shouldn't come back.
Yeah. So we're pretty damn close to that three hundred and twenty thousand dollar budget already. Granted, that has these three lines here, that ten, fifteen and fifteen that are plugged in for the inflatable.
That has those in there.
Yeah.
Okay.
I would rather also get rid of the in likeness of you and find some local stuff.
And so, and I, I think that's kind of one of the point I wanna make, like this is the stuff that costs us money and we have pretty far along.
Janitor Josh does blooms. He does a lot of stuff. Um, maybe he would come for the week.
Yeah.
And all the kids know Janitor Josh.
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
I think that was one, something that was on our list too.
Yeah, it's the poster contest artist, right? So maybe we can find all the things that he does in other people that live here.
Right, and that's what I've been trying to preach with the like local entertainment and the bands, like. I wanna be able to pay them as much as I can, but I really wanna showcase local people. I'd rather pay locals to play than.
Yeah.
I think Janitor Josh also is with Seth sometimes.
Yeah. So, yeah, I just, the point I wanna make is these are the things that cost us money. There's more to the fair than what's on this list, cuz there's a lot of things that don't cost us any money. Um. But we're getting close to our budget and. While some of these numbers are plugged, there's a lot of, there's, they're pretty accurate. It's pretty close. So.
Okay.
We're person wrong. If you guys wanna talk more about the fair, I'm here sixty hours a week.
All right, let's get, we are going to adjourn our work session. And we are going to call the regular meeting to order. Uh, Sarah is online. Mallory's apt.
And we have Julie all in the gallery.
Okay, welcome Julie. All right. Uh, if somebody wanna make a motion to approve the agenda.
Before you move the agenda, really, we'll need to table the Columbia Flyways.
Okay.
Uh. He was, he wasn't able to make it himself. He had somebody who was gonna bill him for him. Uh, and that person couldn't make it, but uh, and we can, if you wanna still talk about it, we can, uh. But basically I told him, you know, we really like people to find sponsorships.
Yeah.
For the rental, but I did pitch to him that maybe they could provide us some services during the fair and then we could come up with an arrangement that way.
Yeah.
Um, and so when I told him that, he's like, well, let's table it and I'll come to the next meeting and we can work on what that might look like over the next month.
I think they need to first volunteer and then we give them, because we usually. Nope.
Their event is after the fair, so we have that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, girl. So do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
I make a motion to approve the agenda, removing Columbia Flyways from the agenda.
Okay.
I second it.
All right. All in favor?
I.
All right. All opposed? No, okay, motion carries. All right. Uh, public comment. At this time, anyone wishing to address the fair board concerning the items of interest on or off the agenda may do so. Person addressing the fair board will, when recognized, give their name and address to the rec, for the record. All remarks will be addressed to the whole board and limited to three minutes per person. Fair board members reserve the right to delay any action if required, if required. Until such time when they are fully informed and the matter is scheduled as an agenda item. Do we have any public comments tonight?
Would you like my public comment about the FFA banquet to be a public comment or as a board member?
I'm just a board member.
Okay.
Okay. So we'll move right along to the consent calendar. Need to approve the minutes for uh, April second's meeting.
I make a motion to approve the minutes from the April second meeting.
I second it.
All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. All right, board member reports. Let's start with Sarah. Sarah, can you hear me? Do you have any, anything to report to the?
To the.
To the board?
To the board. I can hear you and unless it involves baby piglets, I have nothing to say.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Right, I do not have anything.
Is this now when you wanna talk about it?
You can.
Okay, uh, we had our FFA banquet on Friday and.
It was in the.
It was in the barn.
Yeah.
And uh, the kids have said they appreciated everything that was in there. Um, but they want it to be in here.
Yeah.
Um, we already have our date scheduled with trial for next year, but also Tess wanted to know if she could get a list of. What needed to be cleaned up in the future, if the, if you want us to do the bathrooms, the garbage and the sweeping, or if there was something that we missed. When we were cleaning up and doing all the things.
Yeah, I think the, it worked. It was, that was challenging cuz there was so much going on, like getting the garbage cans and the chairs cleaned up was great. Um, the bathroom was fine. Um, it was just hard cuz the kitchen, there was, there was so much going on. And the caterer was like trying to move in for to, for the next night and, um, I think it was fine. I think she was a little surprised when she came back in and saw how much of her stuff. Was still in here that she needed to load up, but that really wasn't us. That was like her food and her, and all of her leftover stuff that she.
For the banquet on that night?
Yeah, and Charlie's like, there's no room in the car for this. And I was like, it's gonna have to fit, cuz there's nowhere else. So they got it. Um, but yeah, we, we typically have a check out list for events, but that one was a little different. And if they would have picked up the tables, there would have been nowhere to put them, cuz they're very anxious places.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can work with their own app.
So are you already booked for that then and it's set in stone, right?
Yeah, we, we already have it scheduled, yes. Um. And I thought it was fine in there. We have a little FFA kid here. Did you think it was fine? Um, we, you could hear the, the sound system worked fine. Um. And I think we had a record number of people. I think we had three hundred people there. Um, and. It wasn't cold. Did you think it was cold?
No.
No.
And it was a wet day that day.
Yeah, it was kind of a pain when we were trying to bring food from here into there because CMH had like just crap stacked. And then I'm sure that they moved, you know, it was just hard getting through. Um, one thing about the stove, we have to have directions somewhere, cuz they turned the stove on wrong.
Yeah.
And then it wouldn't get hot, but nobody knew the stove was turned on wrong. There's a method, so we finally called Teresa Arwood and she knew how to turn it on.
It's on there.
Three hundred baked potatoes in a panic.
Yeah.
I was surprised they cooked. Um.
The directions are on there. You just have to follow them.
Exactly.
They have to be followed, exactly.
Yeah.
Yeah, so nobody here knew that it wasn't on until five thirty.
And then twenty minutes to get it to heat up.
Yeah, so we didn't think we were gonna have baked potatoes, but we did, praise the Lord, that uh, we just got to work on the prayers and it got cooked. Um. But if there's other things that we missed, she would like to make sure that we know that so the kids can also help get cleaned up.
Oh, I think it went fine and with that one particularly, like. We, we were happy to see that event there cuz now we have something that we can. Use and take photos of and share and market and like show people what it could look like in there.
Yeah.
One thing, there was someone there and I never know her name. It's Emily Flewer's mom. Bonnie Fisher, Bonnie Fisher. She made a comment how she appreciated how flat the floor was. There's no lip between the plastic floor and the concrete.
Yeah.
So she appreciated. So she appreciated that because that's always been an issue at the Scan Fest.
Yeah.
So she said it was like flatter than it's ever been. So that's a good thing.
We were looking at it like, um, concrete. You know, like concrete crap as we were going in there. Okay, it's gotta be this far down that way when.
Yeah, there was.
So we definitely after doing it twice last year, we knew what we needed to do.
Cool.
That's all I have.
Uh, I just, I'll add on to that here. Like, I was sensitive to the temperature. I know it wasn't as warm as I would have liked it to be. But nobody was cold, but you definitely didn't want to take your jacket off. Everybody was wearing their coats the whole time.
Yeah.
But it wasn't cold. I think the kids in their blue jackets were just, I saw the one gal was fanning herself. So it was good for them, but, um, yeah, it could be a little bit warmer. It was cold. It seemed like the temperature was fine up until when we opened all six or seven doors to let people in and then draft them in.
Yeah.
You couldn't recover from it.
Jayden, do you have anything you want to add about it?
Sure. What'd your pigs weigh? Okay. Yeah, I've got nothing right now. Um, to be honest with you, I, I, I would, uh. Yeah, I got something for the goodie order, but nothing for, to report on. Um, so we're gonna go ahead and keep on moving here to the manager's report.
Okay, I just have a few notes. I'll try to make it quick. I try to keep you guys up to date. Tomorrow is the second budget meeting. The first budget meeting was really just going over the budget process. Tomorrow we'll actually start digging into the budget. Uh, I know the county is definitely on a cost savings year. They're definitely looking for. Not spending any money that they don't have to as they try to figure out what the impacts of the HCP is gonna be. It doesn't necessarily affect us because we have secured funding with our tax levy, but. Definitely highlights the issue. We were to lose our tax levy and the county is not in a position to bail us out. So something to keep in mind on that next, it'll be at four P M tomorrow. It'll be hybrid meeting. If you wanted to log in and watch it. I'll be down there in person. Uh, Crab Fest went well. I, they've said their attendance was down a little, uh. I'd say when I was, I had to come in several times. There was a couple plumbing issues, couple of power issues. Um. You know, just depending on when you're here. There was definitely times it was here where it was the typical shoulder, shoulder packed. And there was other times where it was just a lighter crowd, but there was a lot of people here. I think that they were happy with it, um. Who knows? Is it, was it the weather? Was it because it was wet? Was it because it was hot? Was it because of, you know, all of those factors that who knows?
Yeah.
Um, but they're definitely learning themselves. Say FFA banquet went, went well. Um, the sheriff at our managing meeting earlier this week had provided us some kudos also. We thought it went well in there too. So I'm glad that, uh, everybody had a good time and it wasn't the total. Um, for us.
Yeah.
Uh, the weigh-in, I, I feel like I heard some comments on that, that it felt like it kind of went quicker being out there. But I think the volunteers probably got pretty hard with it.
It was pretty wet and cold out there.
Um, you know, we can.
Yeah, one question they had was, we used to have a big green and white tent. Do we have that still?
We do have, we have two ten by twenties. And maybe we could get into all of the how we ended up where we were, but essentially Jack and Kelly worked on the setup and that's what they ended up with. So, um, if we want to come up with a better plan for next year, maybe we can get together a little earlier and game plan out what we want to do. Because we could do that. I think something that would be helpful is if there were some bodies from. The market association to help is setting the tent up, setting up all those panels. They're heavy. It's a lot for one or two people to be moving around and do so. And then it would help it be, you know, it's their event. We're here to help them. We're a partnership, we're a team, but it could be nice to have some bodies help set that stuff up.
I think also it would be helpful because the gates were backwards. So the kids were having to go through the gate and then try to shimmy the gate closed to get around, but if they would have swung the other way, they could have come behind.
Yeah.
And like you and Kelly wouldn't know that that mattered.
Right.
You know?
Right. So.
And it was fine. I'm not saying it wasn't fine, but.
The weather was the worst.
Moving the angles through would have been smoother.
Uh, are the tents that you're talking about, the ones that we were trying to use for the concert?
They were the ones we used for the, for the catering.
Okay.
Yeah. And we have.
I question when I can.
Yeah.
Uh, is the intention to just leave us down in the parking lot from now on?
Depends on what's going on. It depends on the date that the association wants to do the weigh-ins. I think if they want to do it after mid-April, that. It will be outside.
I don't think we can. That's too late.
It is too late. Can't make adjustments.
You know, the Crab Fest is the last weekend of April. And the floor goes down like mid-April.
Why did we decide not to use the, uh, I think it was because the event's up here, right? We decided not to use that because of the events going on up here.
Well. And the floor and the, that initial stuff set up in there right now even. Uh, you're talking about the outdoor arena.
The outdoor arena.
And then.
It was too busy because you had the Derby and you had FFA and it would not have flown.
Yeah.
With everything gone.
Yeah, next year it will probably be the Derby still.
Yeah.
Um. Switch your date. But.
It was down there for years. I think honestly, I, it, it can work down there.
A better tent would.
Yeah, a, a, a lot bigger tent. Or maybe a couple more with a wall on one side would have been.
Garages from Costco, the big ones with the wall. I would find, oh, now I can rock that and we put all the walls up on the outside.
Yeah, anyway, yeah, the, the weather was the issue. That's really what the problem was. And so.
You know, I, I don't think we want to be taking the floor of between.
No.
Crab Fest and Skiddit.
I know Sarah's, one of Sarah's concerns is because the rocks are hard on the pig beach.
Yeah.
But could we get some of the stall mats?
Yeah, and so that.
And put down?
Yeah, I mean, we could totally do, go into, you know, how we ended up with what we got.
Yeah.
Um. Yeah, we did a better plan on what the setup should look like ahead of time and then we can, we can do all of those things.
Well, the tent was just a nightmare because there were always small pop-up tents and then between them. We're just so crazy.
Yeah.
Because it was like just coming down between the pop-up tents.
So can this be a discussion when we do the roundtable?
Yeah.
To talk about, I think that this needs to be discussion at the roundtable meeting when we do that again.
Yeah.
I think it would also be nice if we could purchase some of those outside heaters, the propane heaters. That people could rent. And then when we could put up a bigger tent with some sides, maybe we could throw up a heater that's in. You know, so you could at least warm up and dry out. Cause I, I mean, the kids, they're there all day.
Yeah.
And the, the kids were running to trucks and stuff for paperwork.
Yeah.
It would be nice just to warm up for a second.
Mario trailer or something that set up as an office could be built tall or something. There's a lot of ideas.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, and, you know, we're happy to help do that, but just, you gotta have a game plan that we can work with. Um. You know, I think if you, if we were to do it in that outdoor, it would take so much time with all the vehicles having to shimmy and jockey.
I haven't really.
If it's up here, they could be in the middle of the asphalt and it, you know, we could set.
I think if you set up on the concrete in the alley, I don't think you can get in the horse arena with trucks.
No, I was thinking if you put it on the backside, will you wait for fair, then they can drive through.
They could, yeah.
And then you at least have the building as a buffer, you know, the wind is blowing, you'd have that a little bit. That's what I was, then they could just drive through there.
And then out the other gate.
Just depends on what you guys got and what the ground's, how's it going on.
Yeah, it really, yeah, it really does.
Honestly.
But even if the Derby was going.
I left here on Friday night from the FFA banquet. There was already a great big line down there.
Yeah.
Yeah, they spent the night.
Yeah.
Yeah, and then by, I got back here at six thirty in the morning. Seven and it was halfway down to the stop sign.
Crazy.
Yeah.
We didn't come till that end. And then there was only like eight people behind us and it was done.
Yeah.
Uh, but we lived close. We didn't have to. And we just had a little go. I think it went well. I heard positive feedback on that from the sheriff also. He said he felt like. The, I don't know if it was just the weather, that the people were trying to get in and out with, but like the having so much area down there that. The traffic blew, load, load?
Load.
Load better through there. I don't know if that's true or not because I'm not experiencing that.
Yeah.
The CMH event was just transformative, what it looked like in here. We'll get some pictures up on our website and try to get some pictures from them, but. I don't, I don't know if you all saw what it was. It's impressive what they had done. So trying to pitch people for weddings and events like that, like. We have some of that we can put up there.
Yeah.
The lady actually came over and talked to us over at the thing. Her favorite thing to do is make something ugly pretty.
Yeah.
So she was like, I actually want to be over here.
Yeah.
She's like, I can make this look nothing like this.
Yeah.
And I was like, have at her.
Yeah. Well, they had all of this trust, like they had trust all along the two exterior walls that they dangled everything from. So they could have done that really anywhere. And then they draped everything overhead, so they could have done that anywhere.
Yeah.
Um.
Just how much is that expense though?
I don't know what they think.
I don't think.
It was a lot.
I don't think they cared.
I know, I know, but for somebody to come in for a wedding to decorate the way that pictures you sent me. You're not gonna be able to afford it.
Yeah.
I mean, it was beautiful.
There are some crazy people that spend that kind of money, but I don't know. That's, people are coming to lots of kind of.
The only thing I've seen that looked like that is a kitchen area.
Right.
Yeah.
Some of those are.
Pizza American, Sweet Sixteen and some.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, they seem really happy. Um. We really didn't have to do much for them. Like we, we had to empty the room out. We had to move the chairs and the tables. Um, but after that, they did everything. So. That was easy money for us. It was really cool to watch it all happen.
Well, that's good.
Uh, rodeo event, we've got Howell Rodeo. So at the last meeting, we had a quote from Challenge Champions. We agreed to look for a second quote. I got a quote from Howell Rodeo. Um, they are a little bit less also, uh, but when I followed up with Challenge Champions, they backed out. So these guys are cheaper and the other group backed out. And so, um. I've given him a tentative approval to move forward for, uh, Veterans Day weekend. It is thirty-six, seven oh four. What is that? Thirty-six, seven oh four. Um. And I did, these are the same guys that did the show in, um, Tillamook.
Yeah.
He said they bid on this several times here, but they haven't actually bid in here. Uh, we'll have to do, we'll have to get them some feed and some security and some lodging. Uh, but they're going to do. Really do rush dog, announcer sound, two bull, two bull fighters, that must be their bombs, two judges, timer secretary, pickup man, plank man. Insurance, added money, shoes, looting arena, arena board and panels. So this is to include. The, um, Jumbotron that you, so. Yeah, we're gonna move forward. I have a verbal tentative with them. We just have to get the paperwork finalized with them and then we'll announce it and start looking for sponsorships.
Yeah, that's good.
There's a lot of advertisements. People want to go to that.
Yeah.
They're gonna like that.
Yeah.
Monster Truck, so Monster Trucks has also been wanting to come. The guy that used to do the rag truck, Ron. Uh, he wasn't here last year, but he was here every year before. He wants to come in early October. I've got. Tentative deal, actually, the big thing I need to discuss with them is concessions. Um. So what I probably will do is just put him in touch with you and you guess and sort all that, but. They wanna, they have a route, so he wants to come and do that. Love to talk mud with, um. The locals and try to get a mud truck event coming to, they really want to be outside, but. We've got to sort that out. And then, uh, we had some stuff with Business Oregon where we were trying to get that money. They wouldn't let the county manager sign. They wouldn't let me sign. And finally we put Matt's signature on there and. It appears that it's going forward. Most of the other fairs have already received their money. We should expect to get a little over ninety K from them. Um, which is, when I talked to their fair managers, um. Leah was like, I signed ours and she's the manager's like, so I don't know what they're doing.
Yeah.
So that's, that's our COVID relief money from the state. Um, maintenance stuff. The roof, you know, now that that floor is down, that roof leaks a lot. That's a lot more than you realize. You know, there's the couple of puddles that land on the concrete. Um, a lot of mowing, the septic tank, we need to get the grease trap in the ladies', uh, holding tank. We got some fill from Public Works over here where that one food cart goes. Um. And then we ordered a load of topsol to put on top of that fill. So we're gonna get it fine graded now that it's gonna be dry for the rest of the week.
Yeah.
We'll get seed going that it'll have grass by the bear in three months. Uh, master gardeners are gonna do some excavation and cut up, tend to the garden over there. And then, uh, yeah, we need to do the people mover maintenance.
Have you met with the master gardeners?
Yes. I met with them today for like an hour and a half.
Cause I got a couple messages asking why we were tearing out the master gardener's garden.
No, so.
And I said, no, that's not our intention.
Yeah, what I have told them is we're going to be doing our strategic plan. One of the concepts we're talking about is filling in the, off the edge of the asphalt. Maybe we want to do that. They might happen, it might not happen, it might happen in fifteen years. Said, but I would just be careful about investing, you know, tens of thousands of dollars into there while we go through this. Plan process. And then I've also told them that we would want them to be involved in that process as well. There's a lot of, there's a lot of bosses in the master gardener program, so.
Yeah, I'm speaking that out.
Matt's what I've dealt with today. Like they're trying to get this plant sale set up and. You know, they have a lot of people that are ideas, but they don't really have somebody that's the person that's making decisions, so. Their plans change, are changing by the minute. I don't know what they're, what they're gonna do with their show this week. But it's good. I mean, it's a, it's a changing of the guard, they're figuring it out. Yeah, but I've worded, I worded it just like that to them, like to your point, Kelly, said, we might do something, we might not do something. But just, you know, let us know what you guys' plans are and before you spend a fortune on doing something out there, you guys should talk to us.
Yeah.
We're gonna be doing strategic planning. That's my report.
All right, move right down to the financial report. Seeing there's nothing on the business agenda.
Yeah. Well, it looks like mine got shut off. I think I changed.
When are we gonna be posting for temp jobs?
Oh, that was something I hadn't known. Um. Where did I write that? It wrote it right there, intern schedules. That's something I need to, um, one of the things that we have done. Is the class of works has this big internship program and we put our name in the hat for internship. Um, so we could potentially, they have a list of candidates that have to sort through and we would have to make a decision on if we were gonna use any of their interns. They can buy the thirtieth. Um, so I need to sort through that. So we could use some of our temp money to bring them on board since we were having such a hard time finding people. It's kind of an opportunity that we need to be able to. Get somebody out here, knowing that they've got to be helpful with the fair, but there's also other stuff that we can have them up with and just. Getting us to the fair.
Yeah.
We now met. So yeah, that's on the radar to get that going. We want to have them. We technically, our budget starts July first. It'd be ideal to have them ready to start July one.
It'd be nice if we could, I don't know if we have a budget left, if we could hire somebody here in the next month.
Like June first.
Yeah.
June first.
Yeah. Everything, so Kelly can be freed up to do other things.
We did have a little money left on the table. I think I explained this to you when we were going through the budget part, like. It was tracking all of their hours, but then there was that piece of their pay that was coming out of overtime, not out of the temporary budget. So there's a couple thousand dollars left that we could use to start somewhere early.
Yeah.
We need to.
Does the jail still do work crew?
No.
Nope.
They are wanting to bring it back, but now with these budget cuts, I'm not sure if they will.
Yeah.
I don't know. They're having a hard time even keeping people in jail.
I'll tell you what, we at Oset in our March meet, we had an athlete that the war crew went in and stole his wallet and his cell phone right out of our horse tech stall. Went through all of our camera stuff, everything, and we pinged it back to, it'd be like Kelly's shed. We pinged it back there. It was a nightmare.
Oh, nice.
So I, like, it was bad and we never got it back. Yeah, so Yum Hills, I had to deal with that. So it was very.
Frustrating.
It was, it wasn't good.
Yeah, we, we do get a budget driven out, out here helping, but they're usually, when they're out here, when no one else is here. We're bringing them out like on Sundays. They've been doing stuff like pressure washing and eating and things like that.
That's good.
If you have any questions on the budget, um. You know, we're really not spending a lot of money right now. I did buy some more pipe and grave, or not pipe, it was pipes, the crossbars. So I don't know, they disappeared, but I was told that there used to be a lot more, so. Like during Scandinavian Festival, they definitely needed more last year, so we picked up enough, a few more. And I was really surprised at how cheap they were. Those crossbars are only seventeen bucks a piece. I would have thought they would have been a hundred dollars a piece. Yeah, besides that, we're really not um spending a ton of cash right now. We have a few things we need to do, like pump the septic tank and. We've got the sound guy coming out to work on troubleshooting our sound system in the arena. Yeah, not a lot going out. Eighty percent. They just cut off, so it looks funny. When I printed mine off, I printed it off first and I didn't hit the fit to page button. I just caught that before I printed your guys' off. Forty-three percent. We've only used forty-three percent of our total budget. We do sixty-five percent of our materials and service budget. And we only have a month and a half left.
Sure.
Okay. Uh moving on to the goodie order, anybody have anything for the good of the oil? Let's start with Sarah again. Do you have anything, Sarah?
I do not.
Um I think that we need to start, um I'd really like to start working on if we want sponsors, sponsors for other events like Rascal. Um the Rascal Rodeo, we need to start really, I know we have concert sponsors we need to, but we need to also start focusing on that. And stuff, and I'll start working on horses as well, best.
Oh, I can pull up. It's just really, really rough.
It'd be nice to have kind of a list of like what we're kind of looking for for sponsors, because people that don't want to sponsor the concert.
So this is really, really rough of what we put together, so. A presenting sponsor, a grand champion reserve, these are just people that want to sponsor the fair. You know, they would basically get a banner or something. This, that's the hard part is like, what are they getting? And then down at the bottom, these are some of the other things that we could ask for sponsorships for. Mutton busting, Rascal Rodeo, Pig Rose. Golf cart, people mover, signs, open glass awards. Just a hundred dollars for your name in the fair book, type of thing. If it's the recognition on social media, and I think any one of these, we would give people booth. You know, the gear booth and. Fence of fame, put your banner up on the lower field. One thousand, two thousand, three thousand, five thousand level sponsors. I just kind of need to finalize this and what we want to do and we can.
Yeah, it needs to be on social media too, so people can click on it and know.
Will you send that to us so we talk over it?
Yeah, I'd love to get your input and we can get this out.
So I have to start to work on that.
So many irons.
Kelly's getting our list.
No, I only have one thing. Um at the F F A banquet, Gina Jasper asked if we would be uh willing to rent the kitchen. For her to do her own canning, for her own consumption. If we would be interested in providing that. For people, she wants to can tuna. She wants to rent the, only the kitchen for one day.
You know, if there's not an event going on, I don't see why not. It means it's like easy money. So we just would want to make sure that there's not a pay event. Somewhere that we're in here, especially if it was like a weeknight that she wanted to do it. Or a Sunday, it's probably pretty easy. Yeah, we can talk to her about that. If she wants to call me, we can look at dates. One of the trouble, one of the tricky ones we have is somebody wants to like rent the annex a year and a half out and they want to rent the kitchen. It's like. Can't rent you the head, the kitchen with the annex right now, a year and a half out. What if I do an event in here?
Yeah, we're gonna say no to a huge event down here because the kitchen's rented out for the annex.
That's tough, but yeah, if it's something that's.
I feel like the annex is more of a barbecue space.
Right, I agree.
If it's something that like they can be pretty flexible on and get bumped in. Uh we had a caterer ask one time too, that was like, he had an event somewhere that he wanted to use the kitchen. I told him I was open to it, but he ended up not being.
I actually have one other thing um about the people mover. We are not renting it out, correct?
Not, not, not right now, especially, so I did send her a message and said, we won't be available that weekend. I'm not necessarily opposed to it, but it's like. I don't have enough experience with it to know how bold, which the thing is.
I think it's a liability and.
That weekend particularly, the airport wants to use it, and I'm much more open to another big community event doing it, it's like. In, it's in the airport, it's on.
I think it's doing a community, but for private events to take to their home and do, it's not, it's no, it's not an option.
I suggested that you for like six-person carts.
Uh I just have two things. Um one, I I'd like the bathrooms to kind of get gone through. And in the men's bathroom, one of the toilets has a, like a wet, a wooden wedge under it. Keeping it sturdy, I guess. Um there's nothing worse than going to a facility and their bathrooms are just trashed. I'm not saying ours are trashed all the time, but I'd like them to get gone through and just cleaned up a little bit and. See if we can get the wooden wedge out of there and make it fixed. It's been there for two years, I think.
Kelly had mentioned that he, that it was leaking and he had to wedge it up so that the upper part wouldn't leak. But um I had to tear apart one of the women's during Crab Fest.
Yeah, you were telling me about.
It'd be better to even just close that bathroom instead of have the wedge there.
We're gonna fix.
But you know, really what we. We need to get some parts on the shelf for those, for those things and we can tear it out and reset it. It's not difficult. We just need some parts.
Yeah, that's why I think it'd be good to hire somebody. So Kelly's not mowing all summer, so he can be doing those things. Um that, and then the work crew shed area. I was, when we were weighing in animals, I was over there just like staring. I'm like, what are we? I I know that's not.
It's not ours.
Ours, but. It is ours.
It's not, it's on our property and it's not being my brush pad and moved.
Yeah, like there's the, because there's the fence up. What's the fence there for?
Uh you mean just the front fence? That's, that's their fence, I don't know.
Who, the county's fence, right? The sheriff's office. There's no M O U, there's no nothing with that. I think we've kind of gone over that in the past, right?
The only thing I really know is I was asking permitting questions and they were like, well, the last permit that was cut was when they built that building. And they didn't get into too much of the details on it.
I would, I would love for that fence to be down. And that area cleaned up and like maybe they could put up the fence. Back further or something like that, but it needs to be maintained. If it's, if it's gonna be here, it needs to be maintained at least a little bit.
I will start with a conversation with the sheriff and go from there.
Obviously, it's not high priority, but it just, it just looks crappy.
I do know that um a lot of the parts for the tent are stored back there. Like if you're seeing all those big metal pieces, that's the tent. All of the fabric is inside, but the, all the beams and stuff are out there. There's some good stuff out there. I'm sure they haven't secured somewhat because it's the sheriff's thing, but. They, I don't think those vehicles have left that building since I've started.
So anyway, just, just something to look at. I'd like to get it cleaned up, organized.
Okay, I can work on that.
That's all I had. Okay, do we have a motion to adjourn?
I motion to adjourn the meeting.
Wait a second, do we have to have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Thank you all. Good luck, Sarah.
Right, we're adjourned. Thank you.